For the city council.
One moment, Mr. Mayor, it takes a while for the computer to load the new meeting. Council members, Raymond.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here. And roll call for the housing authority, please.
Authority members, Raymond.
Here.
Friedman.
Still here.
Mincy.
Here.
Karazian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Chairman Najarian.
Here.
May we have your report?
The agenda for the May 12, 2009, joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority was posted on Thursday, May 7, 2009, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Mr. Starbury.
Let me go to Madeline Blake for staff report, ma'am.
I'd like to read the item into the record.
Good idea.
Director of Community Development, thank you, Director of Community Development and Housing regarding economic stimulus funding under the Federal American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, ARA of 2009, at 1A is council motion approving cities' federal economic stimulus programs pursuant to the ARA of 2009. And I am pronouncing that, I'm not going to call it ARA for lack of, we don't want to confuse it with our council member or authority member. And at 1B is council resolution appropriating $5,323,291 to appropriate economic stimulus under the ARA of 2009 for Workforce Investment Act, WIA, federal emergency shelter grant, ESG, and community development block grant, CDBG programs.
Mr. Starbury.
Now I'll go to Madeline Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, members of the housing authority. There has been a lot of discussion about the economic stimulus funding and when it will be arriving and what we can do with it. The first round of economic stimulus funds actually has been released to programs that are available to help those people who have lost their jobs, who are on the verge of losing their jobs, and who are on the verge of losing their homes or have already lost their homes. So as such, the city of Glendale has been allocated just over $5.3 million to provide services to those families and individuals, both workforce development, homeless prevention, and community development block grant. We have the opportunity to actually leverage these funds and put together a program that efficiently utilizes the workforce development services as well as the homeless prevention What we're going to do is give a very brief presentation about the strategy for workforce development and then move into the strategy for the homeless prevention funds, which actually utilize the workforce development services. So it's a, it's a good leveraging of resources here. There are some guiding principles, which we will talk about as part of the presentation, but these funds have been made available, they've been put out on the street, they are to be used as quickly as possible, with transparency, as efficiently as possible, highly accountable. We've already had monitors on site looking at how we intend to spend this money. So very visible, the president has a lot invested in his economic stimulus plan, but we think we have a good strategy. The Workforce Investment Board has reviewed the workforce funds and has come up with a good strategy. So we think with this plan, which we'll be discussing with you, we'll be able to get the money out on the streets and help those people who, who need the assistance. So with that, I'd like to introduce Don Nakamoto, who is a senior executive assistant for the Verdugo Workforce Investment Board, and he's going to provide the context for, for these funds and talk a little bit about the, the strategy and the implementation plan for workforce. Thank you, Don.
Thank you, Madeline. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Starbury and staff. As you all know, the Obama administration set aside $787 billion to try and jumpstart the, the economy and create 3.5 million jobs. As Madeline mentioned, the directive from the administration was to spend it very quickly to provide the greatest economic impact as quickly as possible. In the homeless prevention area, they have a deadline of May 18 HUD does to submit their local plan. As far as the workforce investment funding, they want a development of a local plan as quickly as possible. And at the April 16 meeting of the Verdugo Workforce Investment Board, they approved a plan, a strategic plan, and also an implementation plan. In fact, the Department of Labor is saying that they want half of the funding spent within a year, so that would be till the end of April of 2010, that the workforce section has to spend at least half its funding. The second area is the transparency. The administration has set up a website that's accessible to anybody to take a look at where the funds are allocated, who's spending the funds, and what the performance is on the fund. So they're requiring a great deal of accountability and transparency. In terms of accountability, obviously with taxpayer money, the one thing they don't want is the money wasted, and so they're going to be heavily monitoring the expenditure of funding, whether we're actually creating jobs or preparing people to, to get jobs through the, the training. I'm going to give a really brief presentation about the workforce side of things. Just Iran will cover the, the areas of the CDBG and the homeless program. The Verdugo Workforce Investment Board conducted a lot of research to try and identify areas that would be growth possibilities in terms of creating jobs. In this type of economy, that's a real challenge, and I'll get into that a little bit later. They also developed a deployment plan, a plan to implement the strategy that they came up with. The funding coming to the Verdugo WIB, it's broken out into traditional funding streams. There's about 768,000 that's dedicated to the youth area, and about 540,000 of that is dedicated to summer youth employment. We want to put as many youth into jobs during the summer as possible, and so the bulk of that funding is dedicated to summer youth employment. The WIB also received close to 400,000 to work with low-income adults and slightly over a million dollars to deal with the dislocated or laid-off workers. Also recently, we received another allocation of 921,000 to an area called Rapid Response, and basically this money is to provide services to businesses that have experienced major layoffs or are closing. And this area, just to distinguish it from the other funding, can't be utilized for serving job seekers, it's more focused on dealing with businesses. The role set out for the workforce system is to try and retool the skills of the workforce and prepare them to move back into the workforce with a career. And so that's the intent that we were given by the Obama administration. And they laid out four guiding principles, again, the accountability, the transparency, the quick spending of funding, increasing our capacity because we're experiencing a high volume of people, especially in this area, that are in need of our services, so increasing our capacity to serve people. And then finally utilizing our research and data to identify areas of growth. The Obama administration understands this is a difficult economy, and trying to locate potential areas where people can be employed is a critical part of this whole strategy, and one that the, the WIB took pretty seriously, and I think came up with a good plan on this area. As I mentioned, about 90-plus percent of the industries in LA County are currently laying people off and in pretty heavy numbers, and so in this type of environment, trying to identify areas that might be promising to put people in is a really difficult task, but we took a strategic approach. And let me outline some of the, the areas that I think offer some promise. But first, let me quickly go over some of the industry areas that are currently experiencing some problems. Manufacturing, one of the largest areas in the Verdugo region, including Glendale, has been suffering some heavy job losses. The service sector is also experiencing some problems. Retail has been downsizing pretty fast, and the local entertainment industry has probably about a 30% rate of unemployed people currently. Healthcare has been one of the solid areas that has continued to grow, and it's an area that we're going to focus on. Local government has also been fairly solid, but I'm sure you're all aware that things probably are going to change in that area in terms of employment in the near future. Just to set aside the strategy for the Verdugo WIB, the youth money, as I mentioned, is focused on the summer youth area, the majority of the money. As far as the adult money, we're basically relying on three principles there. One is to concentrate on areas where we've had previous success and have a pretty good knowledge of those industries. The second area is to target some of our biggest industry sectors, and not only focus on the short term in terms of accomplishing the goals on the stimulus, but also trying to meet the longer-term needs of those industries. And then the third principle that the WIB developed was, again, using the knowledge that we have of the industries to target special situations and growth opportunities that, that we know about in our local economy. And some examples of things that we've done in the past that rely on looking at this type of data and doing this type of research. For example, in recent years, we've identified nursing shortage locally of about 400 to 500 unfilled nursing openings at four of our local hospitals, including the three in Glendale. And we've developed programs to train over 100 nurses and brought in over a million dollars in funding to do that. Also, in the entertainment area, we did research and identified the fact that the technology in that area had advanced more in the past five years than the previous 50 years combined. So we knew a lot of workforce-related issues were coming up in that area. We were able to bring millions of dollars in to upgrade the training, upgrade the skills of workers through training. As far as the stimulus money, again, we've tried to concentrate on those areas, again, the healthcare area, which has some current demand, entertainment, which is the number one employer in the Verdugo region, the green jobs area, because of the heavy investment by the Obama administration in infrastructure and green jobs, we want to try and piggyback on that and see if we can help people actually have careers in that area. The, the WIB has endorsed these strategies. We put out a request for proposals for contractors, both public institutions and private training vendors, to focus on these three areas and come up with strategies and proposals to meet our needs. And the WIB set aside $1 million of the funding to try and accomplish those goals. The remaining funding is going to be used for customized training, on-the-job training, and individual training accounts. One thing that I'd like to mention also, the strategy with the entertainment industry is that because of the upheaval that's been occurring because of the Screen Actors Guild potential strike, a lot of work has been held back, there's a lot of pent-up demand, and we're projecting that once the contract is settled, possibly by June 1, there could be a lot of new work coming through maybe later in the year, which would be a real boost for the local economy and would time real well with the, the training program that we're putting people in. Once they finish the training, hopefully that industry sector will pick up and those jobs will be available there. To carry out this mission, and the expenditure of the 3.1 billion, million dollars, I'm sorry, in the workforce section, we proposed adding 11.5 additional staff to carry out functions like case management, job placement, fiscal contract management, business assistance and outreach, and the reporting and monitoring function. So I'll turn it over to Just Iran to cover the, the homeless area.
Before you do, I have a question, and maybe others do also. You brought millions of dollars to the WIB over the years, so I'm going to ask you a technical question. Do you think that there will be more opportunities for grants coming down the line, or more specifically on the Title I adult low-income programs? Do you think that's going to be increased, or any possibility of applying for special grants?
Yes, definitely. Besides the formula money that's coming down from the federal government, they set aside 750 million within the Department of Labor budget for stimulus funding, competitive grants. And so WIBs and other organizations can compete for that funding. Currently, we're trying to assess areas that are good matches for our community and evaluating that at this point. A lot of the funding hasn't been competitively released yet, but it will be pretty soon.
Will they be direct applications through the Department of Labor, or are they going to go through the state WIB?
A little of both, actually. Probably, I would guess, about 50/50. Half that competitive funding at the federal level, half sent to the state, and then it's put out through the governor's office.
And then how about the youth programs? Is this a departure where there are more summer program funding for youth rather than full-time? I mean, is the DOL taking a different tack now?
It's probably about double the normal summer youth program that we run. The strategy coming from DOL is that they want the majority of the money spent quickly and invested into the summer youth program, so that's what we're following. We're trying to get the kids to work as quickly as possible and employed, so it would be subsidized.
And I assume there'll be different, not so much requirements, but different reporting procedures for the summer rather than the full-time youth programs?
Yes, they've relaxed some of the performance requirements. The only thing they're requiring on the summer youth is job readiness, and so that's another reason why a lot of the WIBs around the country are trying to focus the majority of their attention and the funding into that area.
Any other questions?
Couple of questions. And I don't think I fully appreciate the work and the focus of the WIB board. We've got about 10%, maybe 11% unemployment in LA County ballpark. And what this money is intended to do is to take those unemployed workers and retrain them, and where are, I mean, are there jobs, are there industry out there, perhaps nursing aside, where there's an unmet demand for workers even in this environment?
There is. I actually had a chart that shows the job growth and decline of about 400, 500 industries in LA County. If you looked at that chart, it's pretty amazing. You see the percentage of losses that are occurring throughout the county in almost every industry, but there are some areas. We've met with the four hospitals in our region, and they still have a lot of unfilled openings. But again, getting back to the issue of having the research done and doing the workforce intelligence work, a lot of people assume they read newspaper articles and assume that there's a big demand for nurses, but if you talk to, for example, our four local hospitals, they aren't hiring nurses right now because they're a little concerned about the, the situation in the economy. Financially, I think they're all doing pretty well, but they're holding back on some of that hiring. And so the WIB identified a situation where we can help actually create jobs by utilizing a program called on-the-job training, where we could pay for half of the salary of the nurses while they get this training, and then the hospitals would actually employ the nurses. So in a sense, the WIB would actually be creating these jobs. The problem is that new nurses have to, registered nurses have to go through a minimum of 12 to 16 weeks of training, and they can't touch a patient, so basically they're, they're not being productive. So the hospitals would rather invest that money and pay, rather than pay $30 an hour, pay 50 or 60 to registry or get temporary nurses onboard. But through the WIB and this program, we may be able to actually assist the hospitals over the longer term and also create jobs locally. So that's just one example. I think there are a lot of those type of special situations that we can take advantage of, and I think we've done some pretty good research in identifying a lot of those different type of situations where there are growth opportunities.
Any other questions?
I made a, Ari, you might, since you're on the board of MTA, you might know better, but I understand from a driver the other day that they're hiring, they need bus drivers.
Hiring drivers.
And is that anything that, like at the Verdugo Job Center, focused at all?
Yeah, I think there's actually a coalition of WIBs in LA County that are working together with the Rapid Transit District and other organizations to try and meet some of the demand. I think it's not only bus drivers, but the whole infrastructure investment. There'll be a lot of jobs created through the stimulus funding and through some of the initiatives that the WIB is pursuing. Hopefully, we can focus on those areas if they present an opportunity for long-term careers rather than maybe a short-term situation that's just supported by the stimulus funding.
Assistant Director Duran.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Chairman Najarian, members of the Glendale Housing Authority. The second part of the three-part economic stimulus program in the city of Glendale is the, the homeless prevention and rapid rehousing program, which are the funds administered by the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development. So the workforce funds are administered by DOL, the homeless prevention, CDBG funds are administered by HUD. But as Don indicated, the guiding principles of the economic stimulus programs permeates to all of the federal departments responsible for having any jurisdiction over economic stimulus There's one other thing I'd like to emphasize, this is one-time, two-year funding. We're going to talk a little bit later about the need to add positions in order to carry out the programs that we are outlining for you today. And because they are temporary positions, we've, we've met with, we made a report and received approval from the Social Service Commission to hire these positions as unclassified salary positions, which we'll get into a little bit later on. But you could clearly see the linkage between workforce, the workforce economic stimulus programs, and the homeless prevention economic stimulus programs. The, the linkage and the synergy, I think, is very clear. People looking for jobs are the same people that are probably, if they aren't experiencing that already, will very shortly begin to experience difficulty keeping up with their rent and utilities, and in the process might also have need for additional counseling services of some sort, which is the second part of the economic stimulus program in Glendale. As Don mentioned, to serve their purpose, the economic stimulus funds are intended to be put into effective use as soon as possible, so we really need your review and approval of a plan in order for us to achieve that. The homeless prevention and rapid rehousing funds are targeted to families with incomes at or below 50% of the area median income, which for a family of four equates to $39,650, so that's the target. Obviously, most persons that have lost their jobs will meet that criterion. The proposed plan for the use of homeless prevention and rapid rehousing funds, well first of all, HUD requires community involvement in the development and approval of a proposed plan. So we did meet with the Glendale Homeless Coalition on April 23 to receive their review and input, and after some discussion with the coalition members, some of whom are represented here today, and with further refinement, the plan that we're proposing to you today was approved by the Glendale Homeless Coalition, and subject to your approval, would be ready for submission to HUD. The proposed plan for homeless prevention and rapid rehousing is comprised of five components. The first component is temporary rental and utility assistance or subsidies to families experiencing difficulty because of job loss. We are, for purposes of developing a unit cost-based budget, we are projecting that on average, the city might provide 12 months of rent subsidy payments directly to landlords at an average subsidy cost of $800 per month, which means that we would be able to serve about 75 households. We are also projecting on average a utility subsidy of $130 a month to probably those same families, but it doesn't have to be those same families, and, and again, for a total of 75 households. We are, we are proposing a rapid rehousing program, which is for families that are already homeless, that will require much more intensive case management, where we would be paying 100% of their rent on their behalf and for a longer period of time because they would have additional issues than, than just families that have recently lost their jobs. And we propose to contract this service out to a nonprofit organization who has experience and better qualifications in intensive homeless case management. That would be the second component. The third component is to provide moving assistance, including security deposits for families that are moving or downsizing from one unit to another, that will be available. And we will leverage that need with some housing funds that we have available for that. We will be providing motel vouchers through a partnership with, with DPSS. We have had discussions with both DPSS and LASSA. LASSA is the Regional Homeless Prevention Joint Powers Agency for the county and city of Los Angeles. So we are prepared to leverage our program with DPSS, and they would provide the motel vouchers based on our referrals to DPSS. And the fifth component is supportive services. Again, we would contract with existing service providers that are part of our social service network through the Glendale Homeless Coalition and through the CDBG program, and we would provide funding for them to expand their services, to give priority to referrals from the Job Center and from the homeless prevention program, and to provide more specialized services. And we're also including in our budget, funding to be able to pay for an accountant position as a result of the accountability and having to make direct payments to landlords and utility companies. Accountability and accounting for the funds and all of the backup documentation that we will need to require will be paramount, and so we're including funding to hire an accountant that will be in the finance division to help support the program. In order to implement the homeless prevention program and to implement the workforce programs, we are proposing to add a total of 14 and 1/2 positions, 11 and 1/2 positions for workforce and three positions for the homeless prevention and rapid rehousing program. A sample of their responsibilities and the scope of work is included in your report. With regard to the CDBG program, which is the third program component of the 5.3 in economic stimulus funding, when I wrote the report, we had not received the rules and regulations for the CDBG economic stimulus funding. We did receive the rules and regulations last Wednesday. Moises and I have been analyzing them over the last couple of days and trying to decipher what the differences were, what the nuances were between that program and, and the standard CDBG program. CDBG program. So we will, as, it would be no surprise to anyone, the first priority with regard to CDBG funds is that we do need to be looking for shovel-ready projects. These are projects that need to start construction by mid-December. Otherwise, they won't do us any good, and we will not be meeting the intent of the economic stimulus program, which is to get people back to work. And in the process of getting them back to work, be able to meet some of our infrastructure needs in our community. The other nuances or differences between the CDBG economic stimulus program and the regular program is that HUD allows 10% for planning and administration, 15% for social services. Although the rules for social services aren't real clear yet, we need to continue to analyze that. And 75% of the funds for capital projects, which, a total of $660,000 that we have available for a shovel-ready capital improvement project for the city. Now, by coincidence, we do have a meeting scheduled with the CDBG Advisory Committee tomorrow afternoon, which is very timely because we will be able to give them the same report and get input and comments from the advisory committee, which we will bring back to the City Council and Housing Authority in order for the City Council and Housing Authority to make a final decision on approving projects for the CDBG economic stimulus I think that's all I have to report.
So the final percentage for the CDBG in terms of capital programs is actually up to 75%?
It's 75%. If we did not use funds for social services, for example, then it could be 80%. If we didn't use funds for administration, it could be 100% capital projects.
Okay. And is there any inclination as to whether they prefer that it be used on city-type projects or area nonprofits?
Yes, Mayor Quintero, the inference from HUD is that they fully expect that these would be city infrastructure projects because those would be the most capable, be shovel-ready. So we are planning to meet with the city departments and begin to discuss which projects they might have that would be shovel-ready and that are CDBG eligible. They still have to meet the regular CDBG eligible criteria of serving low-income families or in neighborhoods that are low-income neighborhoods.
Then on page seven, number one, temporary rent and utility subsidies. How are you going to go about identifying these households? Will they be primarily, do you think they'll be primarily people who have touched base with the Verdugo Job Center?
Yes, Mayor Quintero, we anticipate that most of the families will be direct referrals from either the workforce caseworkers or caseworkers from the various social service agencies that we work with on a regular basis. They will be screened, they will fill out applications, they will be assessed, we will verify the information that they are giving us, and then the caseworker, the homeless prevention caseworker will determine whether they are a good fit for the program in order to, for us to begin to subsidize their rent and their utility payments.
Is one of the requirements going to be that they last lived in the WIB area, or can they be from other parts of the area?
We would not be able to restrict them from living in the WIB area, but we could give preference to persons that have a history in--
It'll be like a dislocated worker type of--
Exactly.
You know, when you're homeless, through the years, we've always thought of homeless kind of a nebulous thing, you know? The mentally ill, the people that have trouble with drugs and so forth. But nowadays, the homeless could be your neighbors. It's a whole different thing, and I'm really happy to see some of the things that you're talking about here, particularly the temporary rent and utilities and the rapid rehousing and so forth, that it's good to see that this money is coming for this purpose.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Friedman, followed by Mr. Najarian.
I have a question about the new staff positions you're going to be creating. I understand they have a very specific skill set, but I'm wondering if they can be drawn from our own workforce development program, especially given that there's probably people entering those programs that are well-educated and could maybe fill those positions.
Yes, Councilwoman Friedman, absolutely. In fact, the Job Center caseworkers are pretty adept at marketing city job openings, and so they would have every opportunity, of course.
Mr. Najarian?
When I was reading the report on the homeless prevention and rapid rehousing, I'm not sure that it's, funds are targeted for the broader area of the WIB. The WIB is Burbank, La Cañada, other areas. Looks to me as though it's targeted only for the city. I'm sure you'll go through the, you know, work out the details, but, and I know this has nothing at all to do with the program that we all love, Section 8, but prepare yourself for a deluge, the likes you haven't seen since the year 2000, I think, when you opened up the Section 8 roles. The misinformation that I think is going to be misinformation and rumor and excitement of additional funds, rental assistance, utility subsidies and all that are going to spread through this community like you've never had. You're going to need to increase the police force to keep those. And I'm not kidding, I know the last time we did it, it was a major thing. So I think it's important that, number one, I guess, I know it was reported in the news press that this is for those people who have lost their jobs, and there's a tight screening process. This is not the typical, "I'm a senior, I'm disabled, I can't afford my rent" thing, specifically targeted. So I think the more clear we can send this message out to the public, the less of a circus we're going to have. But I think we're going to have a circus of some nature or another. Perhaps you've thought about that, and please be ready for that.
Yes.
There's a lot of desperate people, and there may even be many qualified people who understand and fit the criteria, who are going to come forward and try and make avail of this program. So I think there's going to be quite, quite a bit of interest in it, so.
That's a valid, that's a valid concern.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, do I have a motion?
There's a motion and a resolution. Both councils.
Move one, A and B.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers, Strayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Will be adjourned for the City Council?
Second.
Adjourned for the housing.
We did need a motion for housing to the City Council. Okay. All right.
We should.
Authorities.
Thank you. Good night.